Start the work session for July 28th, 2020. We're gonna just go real quick with the meeting agenda, just to make sure that it's working. So on the consent agenda, we have the July 14th, 2020, July 14th, work session, regular section, and then we have approval of a contingency fund expenditure of $11,742 for the police vehicle replacements. We talked about that earlier. That was where the car was wrecked, and they're gonna buy an SUV, and it was just simply out of funds, correct?
Well, it's primarily covered in sploths, and the remaining that wasn't, that was received by the insurance was the $11,742, so that's really what you're approving, is the use of that insurance money to add to the sploths of money already approved for the purchase of the replacement vehicle.
Any questions related to that? Chief Speaker if you need to. Questions? Ma'am, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Meeting agenda?
No, wait, ma'am. If you remember, you wanted to add this potentially to the consent agenda, which is the CARES Act money.
Is that electronic or something that was handed out?
No, we, we, we just got it, and it's basically the CARES Act money that Angela had been working to apply for, and they sent us this notice that basically, in order to receive 30% of it now, we have to execute this document, and I think today is the deadline, isn't it, if I read it correctly? Now, and so for the mayor to sign it, which basically says, "We want to receive our CARES Act portion," then y'all have to pretty good sign it.
Yeah, it was money from the government, and it was originally just sent by digital. The idea was rather than just, you know, sign off on it, we just wanted to make sure we got approval from the city council to accept it, and...
And I will say that when I spoke to Angela about it today, she was kind of surprised at the timeline. I don't think you expected Angela to see it so quickly. So it's just kind of like, I don't know, there seemed to be wanting to roll it out pretty fast. Now, you don't have to accept it, but it could put your CARES Act money in jeopardy.
Yeah, we need to accept it. Some of the things that Robert's spending money on CARES on, we're gonna get some of that money back.
Yeah, and this is not for just random expenditures. These are expenditures related specifically to emergency response.
Right. So maybe some things like the...
Like how if the drive time for ambulance sends for transport or something like that.
Maybe some of the testing that we got, possible, things like that. So it's a reimbursement possibility. Any questions related to that?
I have a question.
Yes?
When you say that emergency response, is that, that is for the COVID-19...
And it's money to us, but obviously, we think about bigger communities that are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. That won't be us, but we want to cover what we can.
And say what we can get.
Ma'am, any questions?
Let me ask Angela. So in applying for the grant funding, tracking what has already been, tracking what has already been spent was a part of applying for the grant?
Yes. Yeah. We can't, any expenditures from, I think it's March of 2027 through now, actually, they say through the end of the year, is part of this, is part of this fund there.
Through the end of the year, so...
Supposedly, yeah, but it's, it's in the sense that we have to, you get 30% upfront, that's a hundred and a thousand, but then it's the weirdest thing I've ever seen, where you gotta apply those next 70% by September the 1st, with documentation.
Okay.
Yeah, so I can be creative, but no, yeah, it's kind of weird. They usually give you time to, you know, to, on a monthly basis, or whatever, to draw money down.
See real estate instead of...
Yeah, they may be, they may be trying to meet some federal deadlines, because you know, the federal government's end of the September 30th, and then starts a meeting in the presidential year too. They're probably just trying to get this money rolled out as quickly as people possibly, so since it's there, I'm assuming, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So then that would be under the consent agenda. And then the meeting agenda, any questions related to the meeting agenda?
No questions.
Sure.
So I did receive an email, I believe it was sent by city hall staff regarding changing the ordinance for the work session meetings, and I did, I did reply, however, I did not receive a response to my email. And upon receipt of the information for the meeting is when I saw that, all right, best way I can characterize it is without discussion, you know, moving forward with the ordinance was already on the meeting agenda, so...
Well, the idea behind the ordinance for additional work sessions is like tonight's meeting, we would not have been able to hold at 5:30, because it's the one on the, you know, the fourth Tuesday. We would have been allowed to do one on the second Tuesday. And the argument is, if, you know, if we're able to conduct the business, we can always hold a special meeting, you know, but I hate that because you're not...
You can use the mics, because we can't hear anything you're saying. You're mumbling all over.
We staff, we'll do someone.
Why don't we put the mic in?
So I'll restate where, where I was going that led to his response. There was an email sent regarding the ordinance that is currently on the agenda for the public meeting. I did send my reply, however, there was no response. And so upon receiving the agenda for the meeting, I noticed that the ordinance had already been written, and it's already on the public meeting agenda for its first reading. So he was replying to that.
Yeah, and it's basically the, there was a city ordinance. It didn't used to be that way, but at some point years ago, somebody passed an ordinance that basically said the city council could start its work session at 5:30 if it chose to, at the, the second council meeting, or the, the second Tuesday, the first council meeting of everyone. But then it left it at 6:30 for the other, doesn't really make a lot of sense. So the idea was to be able to conduct your business, and be able to say, if the city council chose on the fourth Tuesday to meet at 5:30 for a work session, your city council meeting still decided, we wanted the ability available to do that. And that's really all that...
No, we can put, we can put the mics in, but it will cause feedback, you know, do you want to try it with the mics?
Come back to me.
We all know, because I can hear it.
Has she up there?
Well, come on up here. Well, come on. They're playing it right over here. I can get it.
But anyway, that's what it's related to. It's a first reading of an ordinance that allows us the ability to be able to do that.
And so prior to, I guess, during the work session, we'll have the discussion that was never had prior to the...
Because it's on, it's on the work session agenda.
Certainly.
All right. Any other questions related to the meeting agenda, in terms of what we have here?
No.
Okay. Then item number three is the approval of the staff recommendation for SCIFLE, for the mobile development app, for those that had a chance to read that. That was the staff recommendation at the last city council meeting. Any questions related to that?
No, I've been to the candidates that submit their proposal, and do all of them. Rising wise and functional wise, I think I'm in, I still want to pick SCIFLE.
What?
I have no...
Okay. Renee?
I don't have any objections to the staff recommendation.
Okay. Renee, not Renee, Ms. Tran, any questions?
No questions.
All right. So then, these were the other applications, if somebody wanted to read it. Got to remember the first reading, you know, so that, that's pretty much the regular agenda. All right. Then going into the work session, we'll start with that. There was a mobile application development, RFP for vendor selection, that was coming up on the regular side. Okay, SCIFLE policy, item number three, or two. We, we had a discussion at the last council meeting for a SCIFLE bank. I think since then, we've gotten at least one, was it the Board of Education's, was it yours, policy?
We, we never actually got, did we get it?
No, we received the application, not the actual policy. The policy in...
Once we pick it up.
So we, we did, so when we didn't, weren't able to put our hands on Board of, the Board of Education's SCIFLE policy. We chose a couple of samples from other government SCIFLE banks. However, I've had a, some follow-up conversation with, with Councilwoman Tran, and she, since she's the one that brought it up, she wanted to sort of have me amend her intention, and Councilwoman Tran, if I mess it up, let me know, that it's, her hope was to have some more of like a, an act of kindness, where say if I knew employee A was sick, and employee A's department had sent out a, hey, does anybody want to give, contribute time to this employee because she's out of sick time, that I could personally choose, or any of my colleagues could personally choose to hand over that sick time to a specific person, versus storing it in a bank, just ready to be someone to apply to receive it. So, you know, I don't know, from here, the council wants to discuss how they'd like to see it moving forward, because we, from the last meeting, we were moving forward with a sick bank idea, and I just wanted to say that it seems like that was not the intention of the person who originally brought it to the table. So I feel like at this point, the council would need to decide amongst themselves, how do you want to move forward?
Ma'am, do you have a policy, do you have a policy related to what you've seen?
I have not got a copy of that, but I will be, I will reach out and get a policy so we can do it, because the, the sick bank that we're looking at is that employees who have maxed out their SCIFLE would, to put, pour their, unused to their, or that's what the donation, which is regardless, your status of SCIFLE. You don't have to be maxed out your accumulation SCIFLE, but your act of kindness, you want to help out somebody in a bad shape, then you can donate your SCIFLE to help out that employee, your...
And then, we don't have your policy yet either, right?
No, but again, as it's applied...
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll get it next time.
Okay, because as it's applied in the school system, it's, you enroll in the sick bank, and it's, you know, there's a sick bank committee, there's a process by which you would apply to use, and there's limitations and caps, and there's an appeal process if you're denied. So it sounds like what she's referring to is, you know, just the policies that the city would allow employees if they so chose to donate sick time to a colleague.
Well, let's try this. Why don't we get a copy of both policies, and then, once we get those out to the council, I mean, we don't have an immediate need situation, then this review, and maybe we take a little bit of both, or we choose which one we feel, you know, provides what we're requesting. Does that work for everybody? Ms. Van?
I have a question. Do we know how the employees deal with, they think about it? What, what they want to do, or how would it, since it's their time?
We haven't asked them specifically, but I can't imagine an employee being opposed to receiving sick time from somebody that wanted to donate it. I mean, I would say even probably Chief Swett has, more recently, had people that ran out of time when they were on leave. He, he may want to speak to it, but, you know, this is nothing but an added benefit. I can't imagine anybody wouldn't want to do it, but Chief Swett, anything to say on that?
Sure. Over the years, we've had several folks that exhausted all their SCIFLE, and employees have always wanted, they've always come to us and said, "Can we donate sick time or some kind of time?" And Angela's always been, "No," because we didn't have a policy. Right now, we have a firefighter ward, broke her arm. It wasn't an on-duty injury, it was something she did off-duty. She's out of SCIFLE, she hasn't been paid, well, six hours of paycheck for the last two checks. So she's out of time, and she would be a great benefactor of something like this. So I think all employees would appreciate it very much.
Having it, either way, or the way...
Yeah, I don't know the details of both, but what we've been asked about in the past was an in-kind thing, like Councilwoman Tran was talking about tonight. I've never heard of the bank thing that was brought up last meeting, but I think either one would be satisfactory.
Okay. Is there a threshold of time where employees actually begin to earn that type of benefit with time?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, so it may be that if you, in order to participate, you'd have to be employed for a certain number of months anyway, because it's all accrued based on how many hours you work, right?
Correct.
So, you know, and those are the kinds of things we would want to look at, because creating a policy that allows it is a sentence in the policy manual, but creating a more, you know, layered process is something that we wanted to see the sample policies for.
Okay. So we'll get the sample policy, and we'll take a peek. Item number three, CAMFE discussions. This is related to property that is out for the conference center, and the city is in the process, not in the process, we actually pay about $108,000 a year to South Lake Hall for those CAMFEs. And the idea would be to try to figure out a way to, you know, end that requirement. Right now, you're paying about $108,000 for somebody to stay at a piece of parking lot. We do our own lights, there's no reason for anybody to be inside, you know, doing the HPAC. That's a significant amount of money, and that was negotiated a while ago, but we've had conversations with the city attorney to see if there was a method to be able to put that money back in our pocket, and there appears that there might be. So that, that's, that's the first one, and that deals with the conference center, and we want to give them the green light to make that happen, I believe.
Well, I spoke to one of our attorneys this afternoon, in fact, so I think probably I should just, you know, send an email explaining what he laid out as the step forward, because it's not, it's not something that you just say, yes, go. They need, it's a process with, you know, some concepts, appraisals, title searches, those kinds of things. And so if you, if you're okay with it, having just spoken to him this afternoon, I can write up something, just shoot it to the whole council, just so you understand what his, what his outline of the process was.
Say, now, if you're gonna pay $108,000 a year, you'd like to get something for them. That's fair.
I think this is something new and different for me, and I'm quite sure for the new council members, and I believe that if we're going to venture into this process, I think I would be more comfortable to have our legal body here to explain exactly how this process is gonna work going forward, what it, how is it gonna affect the city's standing, or just...
City's standing in what, just I can't figure out.
Well, that's what I want to find out, from, from our, the, the legal team, and I'm asking to have a...
How, what was that memo, Renee? Did everybody get a copy?
They, no, it wasn't, she, she was the one.
I have questions. I, I, there are some questions that I would like to ask, and I'd like to have it explained, this process, for property that we own. What is that gonna do to the, the resale value, or the, you know, just exactly, when you condemn property?
Okay, now, there's two different types of condemnation.
Right.
One would be, somebody has a dilapidated house.
I understand.
And we condemn it, which basically means nobody can use it.
Yes.
Okay. The other one is when you condemn it for a public purpose, which would be like a rent. It's a process, a court process for the government to be able to pick it up.
I'm asking, I'm asking the legal council to come in and explain that to us.
It's a, what you call a friendly condemnation, because you already own it on your left hand, and you're transferring it as an asset to your right, and you're cleaning up title in the process.
Right. I'd like to have it for the record, for their explanation of, to us, what this process is, so...
Did you not get a copy?
I got a copy of what was written, but there, there's a difference in them being here, and we can ask questions if we have a question. So I'd prefer to have the questions answered by their legal team.
All right. People have another question right below this one, so let's start with that. All right. Any additional questions on that item? One second, I'll, I'll answer back. Ma'am?
No, I just agree with Dorothy. Reading the information that was provided in the work session, it's, you know, it provides a timeline of events, but it does not correspond with actual actionable items that would lay out the course of doing the condemnation. So, you know, we, we would, it would benefit us to speak to the legal council.
Okay. All right. Then the next one ties into that to some degree, and that is, you know, when it comes down to the old town mall property, as we know, you know, there seems to be some debate as to whether certain easements were actually registered and, and applied down at the county tax agents. Right? It, it should have been done, you know, some of this stuff was done years ago, and other surveys on it. It, it doesn't matter if, if it was never actually put on the tax agents. In other words, if somebody puts a lien on your property and it's never filed, which the city's done on its own, then nobody else can be able to record it either. Now, unfortunately for us, from that time period to now, the properties went into bankruptcy and come out of bankruptcy, and it's a new owner, right? So they don't know any more than we do. So in this particular case...
You're speaking of the mall, the mall owners, right? You're saying they, they, that's the mall?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So there's, there's some debate on the bridge, in terms of what easement rights. We know we have some easement rights, because they're written, we just don't know that we have all of them. Okay. Then the other one is the, it looks like the access site coming across the original, okay? And then, so you have the bridge between the two. Y'all have the plaits in front of you, right?
Yeah.
Do you know where it's placed?
Yeah.
Okay. But just to make sure that we don't just go in there and have one discussion and not clear up this ability, what, what I want them to look at is the piece of property from the left side of the bridge, if you're looking at it facing South Lake Circle, including the creek itself, and then ultimately, the roadway on the right-hand side. And that would also be a condemnation, is to sit in there and say, whatever rights we do not have, or whatever property we do not have, we're gonna clean it up once and for all. Okay? And that would be ultimately to take ownership, title of that through condemnation. Any discussions on that? Go ahead.
Well, there again, it's condemnation, it's still the same category, so...
We're gonna bring them here, we'll bring them here and have some conversations.
Well, and actually, at this juncture, it's not condemnation.
That's correct. It's a discussion.
It's a planning discussion for, because it, it doesn't, it can't even become, you know, considered that till farther down the line, so...
First, you gotta go with a balanced description, you gotta define the public purpose, you gotta go out there and do an appraisal on it. For anybody who's actually went out there and looked at the 13 acres that are over there, it has a fair market value, according to the Cleveland County Tax Digest, $30,000 for the entire 13 acres. It's not worth a lot. Okay? In the event that somebody did decide that it was worth a lot, there's a lot of property there that's unusable, that they would be paying county taxes on it for a very, very long period of time. If it was yours, you probably would have wanted it worth a tremendous amount. Renee, any questions?
So all of this is under CAMFE's discussion, and I'm...
No, that's the second line. CAMFE's was basically conference center one, condemnation under that, Old Town Mall access, that's number two.
Okay, so, so based on the heading of CAMFE's discussion, and going into condemnation between the two properties, still related to CAMFE's discussion, as is noted under the header.
That's correct.
So if we're paying CAMFEs, and you've characterized it as $108,000 a year...
Correct.
Do we understand why, based on what you've stated, why we're not receiving any services for the payment of the CAMFE? Do we have any idea? Has there been any conversation with the mall to understand?
Well, yeah, of course, there's been years of conversation that led us to that settlement, which is $9,000 a month in CAMFEs for all of the maintenance that they consider they deliver to us, whether it's, as the mayor mentioned, lighting, it's not lighting, because we pay for our own lights. So it might be, if they painted the building, they resurfaced the parking lot. The question we have to ask ourselves is, is the value of the research we're receiving worth $9,000 a month? And that's one question. The other question is, if it's not, does the council want to try to figure out how to find a different path forward, where we're not paying $9,000 a month?
So even with, you know, signage around the mall, you know, something that benefits the property overall, is the, is the city in communication with some of the things that we see that are glaring, you know, issues and problems, based on the fact that we do pay CAMFEs? Do we communicate, you know, with the authority of the city saying, you know, okay, in addition to paying CAMFEs, this is, this is against the city ordinance for, for your sign. It's not a, it's not a good sign, you know, whatever the case may be. Do we have those kinds of conversations?
Sure, and, you know, it wasn't, I guess it was two years ago now, you may even remember, seeing the new sign package that the mall presented, you know, going back several, a couple of years ago when Judy was still here, because our position is, is that you gotta get some better signage. And even if it's just, not only just the, the stanchion signs on the Mount Zion in the 54 corridor, but the sign that, you know, you can see from the interstate, the tiny little South Lake Hall sign, but we can't force them to do that. I mean, they're not, you know, they put the signs up under the codes at the time. If they were going to put up new signs, we can hold them to the new standards, but we can't force them to update their signs as a city, but as a CAMFE payer, yes, that is, you know, part of the conversation, but...
So I guess that's part of my point where I'm getting to. If we're paying for something and we bring it to their attention, then where does the conversation, where does the conversation go, or how, when did it get cut off, that we didn't receive, you know, at least decent signs, better-looking signs?
Yeah, I mean, and I would probably say that because the CAMFEs were settled in litigation, that's not probably an active conversation in that respect, specific to CAMFEs, that we've had in the five years I've been here. So, you know, that would be something we'd have to, you know, persevere. It just depends on what position the council wants to take. What are you fighting for? The services at that value, or to not pay that money? Because you wouldn't get better.
At this point, considering we do pay the CAMFEs, I mean, this, the signage we pay, at, at a minimum, I mean, there are some, there are some cosmetic things that, you know, if we are paying for something, there are some cosmetic things that we, as paying, you know, participants to the upkeep of the exterior of the mall, then...
Well, this would be an attorney's question, because for us, every, if the mall has 100 businesses, you know, and I say, "I want this sign," and another business says, "I want," I don't think it's set up. You don't get to define what you get. They define how much you owe them for whatever they choose to do. And Mayor, you might know more about this. I, I wouldn't know, would you, as an, as an individual CAMFE payer, would you be able to make demands of the mall?
Or awarding the other CAMFE payer?
Only if the CAMFEs are defined. So, again, some of this could be subjective. As you could look at it and say, "The parking lot is not as clean as it could be," right, in terms of sanitation sweeping. We could look at it and say, you know, "You're not planting enough landscaping, enough seasonal color. You know, it used to be done this way, and it's this way." Again, very subjective. If something was, like, the, the one side is a disrepair, simply because it was hit by a car.
Right.
Let's assume it wasn't hit by a car, and it was just poorly maintained. Now, you'd have a very good argument, but what would actually force them to do it? You know, you might have to have a, you know, a legal letter that goes with that, to kind of say, you know, you have an obligation here, and you're not following that obligation. But remember, these were all set up in 1975. That's where the originals come from. And property was maintained a lot differently back in 1975 than this camp.
Isn't part of that CAMFE for, for repairing, repairing of the road going around it?
Ring road, it's one. I'm, I'm sure resurfacing to some degree is probably in there.
Yeah, so, 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 you know, I, I think...
Yeah, but that, that's a good point.
We need some questions answered for things going forward, you know, what are we gonna be responsible for, and all of that outside of this condemnation. So I'd like a list of things that might fall back on us, if there are gonna be any adverse effects, I'd like to know, you know, those things sooner than later, because, you know, I wouldn't want to have, you know, council, you know, years from now, saying, you know, "Why did we do that?" So...
But fair to say it's not being maintained for anyone, would you?
Well, then, being maintained, there's one thing, yeah.
And with what we're paying now, then, you know, we should make sure that we're doing what we can to make sure that it is maintained, whether it's direct communication with the mall, or other parties who pay CAMFEs.
And let's face it, we're only 110 over there, so... And let's face it, we're only 110 over there, so...
Correct.
Somebody's raising some pretty significant amount of money. And certainly, you're making the argument that, I don't know where you're spending it, but I know where you're not spending it.
Mayor, if I may, before we go to the next item, I'd like to make a request to add to the agenda, to the work session, and the agenda that Mayor and Council discussed having a retreat. I feel that there's a clear need for it with half of the council, being a new council, that there's some things that we need to discuss and get, you know, a hand along. And I think a retreat is needed, very much needed.
Go ahead. Dan?
I'm good with that.
And we'll add a vote to, well, obviously, you've already had a discussion about it from the work session side, so we'll just put that on a consent agenda. And the retreat is a matter of getting the information so we know exactly where we're going to be in all these other types of things.
And, you know, if we would like a facilitator to guide the understanding of, to drive the conversation, we've had retreats where we've had facilitators if we want to take that responsibility on ourselves, you know. I think my stand, in my opinion, is although you're wanting to add to the ordinance to open up additional time during the work session for discussion, but retreats are valuable tools so that the council can interact together in a focused manner on a Saturday, or, you know, whatever time our schedule permits. But I think we're way overdue for a retreat. I think some of the manner in which the work sessions are being handled right now, we just have a long laundry list of topics that we recycle in and recycle out, some to conclusion, a lot not to any conclusion. A retreat really captures a way for us as a council to move forward with some action items and some focus, a little bit better than the work session.
If I may, I mean, that's a lot to sort of tie up quickly in a consent agenda item. Are we okay with...
Well, I mean, now that we've talked about it, the work session.
Yeah.
The idea is, let's put some concept of a retreat together and see if we can all agree.
For the next one.
Yeah, sure.
With a facilitator.
With a facilitator?
Yes.
You don't like a facilitator? The outcome might not be much different.
No offense, no offense, I'm just saying, okay?
I have no idea or no problem with a retreat. Here's usually my concept on that. Right? If you're not careful, you know, we can have a good time in hell in Georgia, you know, at the taxpayers' expanse.
Oh, no, community room is fine for me.
I understand. You know, we're just sitting there going, all right, you know, let's make sure your citizens have the ability to attend.
Mm-hmm.
That's what it's designed for.
It's a public meeting.
You're welcome.
It is a public meeting. But if I held it in places where a lot of retreats are held, the bottom line is, nobody shows up.
Yeah.
And that's one reason I've never been involved with those, just simply because if we're going to talk about something, that example we've done this year before, when we did different agendas, let them sit there and listen to whatever it is you want to say. And I don't have a problem with it. So, let's just make sure that it's local.
Yes.
Go ahead. Others can attend if they so choose, and we'll make that work.
We've had quarterly retreats in the community room, in the boardroom, and they're open to the public. Sometimes the public comes and stays for a while, sometimes they're not. But, you know, I think Dorothy and I are referring to an opportunity for the council to have better conversations with actionable outcomes, rather than the kind of format that we're going through with the work sessions currently.
And actually get an opportunity to see, hear the vision of everybody moving forward. That's what I'd like to know, things, you know, we have some dialogue.
Okay. I'll leave it there. All right. All right, item number four, vegetative management discussion. Part of this comes into cleaning up the visibility to, from I-75 to South Lake. All right? We know we've met with GDOT out there. We know we're looking for an arborist to be able to define certain things. We also know that around the light poles themselves, Georgia Power has an existing permit that allows us to be able to work with them to get that done. Okay? So, I believe we've got a proposal here for about 10 grand. Do you ever take to be able to do something? And depending on how much they actually clean out, and then the timing of it, so this is where you've got to kind of gauge this a little bit and be able to say, in no case would we get tremendous visibility without the arborists and the other things that we have with the GDOT proposal. I know that's not going to clean itself up. But, you know, it might not be a bad use of $9,000 to get a good lid under somebody's existing permit if you can. And there is your choice. So, the choice is either you do it or you don't. Then if you do do it, what is the timing of it to be able to see, you know, is this something we do in the fall? Is this something we do now to be able to get the most bang for your money?
Well, and let's don't forget the, if you don't do it, the lights can't get fixed. So, there's that. I mean, it's not just about vegetation. It's about getting the lights accessible.
So, there is the question, and you have the proposal, I believe, from somebody.
It is. It's not scheduled for a vote tonight.
Okay, so it's just a discussion, right? But the price tag is $9,920, and that's from Georgia Power.
Yes, and Billy's here, and spoke with him personally. If you guys want to ask him any questions.
True.
Yeah, I had an opportunity to visit with Glenn Edwards with Georgia Power.
Gene.
Oh, excuse me, Gene, I'm sorry. Basically, there are about nine lights that they can't get to as a result of the vegetation along the roadway. So, what they want to do is, they thought GDOT was going to come in and assist with cutting those streets. But they're saying, no, that's not happening for whatever reason. Nevertheless, I'm nine lights down, and it's getting a little darker out there. And we're getting ready to go into the fall, which means it's going to get darker quicker, it's going to last a little longer. So, I had a conversation with city manager, basically to say, what do you want to do? I've got another arborist, AKA arborist, is going to meet me out there tomorrow at 11 and have some additional discussions on costs associated with possibly fanning out the trees and cleaning it up a little bit better than what it is right now.
But to be clear, that part takes a plan submitted to GDOT, and they have to approve the plan. So, these are two separate issues.
That is correct.
GDOT is going to let us move forward with the vegetation removal around the light poles in order to fix the lights. Separate from that, we would have to hire an arborist to draw up a plan to remove any additional vegetation that might be invasive, or good trees killing bad trees, or whatever they call it. And then, we would have to submit that to GDOT separately.
Correct. And that's a discussion we're going to have tomorrow. What does that look like? Is there a cost associated with that, so on and so forth, so that I can come back and give the city manager an update on what we could potentially do going forward.
So, if we cut the trees, what kind of timeframe to get the lights fixed?
Well, that's another conversation that we would have to have with Gene.
Well, but as soon as you approve it, he's going to get started immediately. So, and the lights getting fixed will be days after the days it takes to clean up the vegetation. So, within 30 days, if Georgia Power was approved to do this, they're going to have the vegetation removed unless it's like it rains for nine days straight or whatever.
And you're talking to interstate lighting, for those that...
Yeah, the high mass.
So, if you're driving off the interchange right now and you realize that half of it isn't working, we now have at least one reason why they can't reach it.
Well, they repaired a lot of them, because you already approved that proposal a few months ago, that they just couldn't get to these additional poles.
Yeah, there's nine poles that they couldn't get to as a result of the vegetation.
Any opposing to not doing it?
I think we've had enough conversation, it's just, they're done.
Well, then, you can add this agenda to the, you could add this to the consent agenda.
Ma'am, you good with that?
She said she is.
Okay. Do you have a problem adding it to the consent agenda so we can accomplish it?
Is she being recorded? Is she being recorded?
Are you muted, ma'am?
We can't hear you, ma'am.
Yes, I'm, I'm good with that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Now, yeah.
I can.
So, we'll add the vegetative service contracts with Georgia Power to the consent agenda.
If I could just add very quickly and...
Go ahead.
Ask about the lighting at the Marrow Center. I know we had a conversation about that previously, and I think you were speaking to Lauren about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there an update? There was an event there recently, and it was dark.
Yes, several things.
Is Georgia Power's plan free?
Ma'am? There were, there are several things that I'm doing at present. First thing, we reached out to Siemens, had them to come out to completely do an assessment of the HVAC system, make sure there were no variables offline. Everything's operating as designed and functioning the way it's supposed to. That's a done deal. So, that's one thing out of the way. I had a conversation late this afternoon with Warren, and there is still a problem. So, I reached out to Georgia Power and said to them immediately, I need someone to come out. I need an energy study done on that facility. There's two possibilities of what could be happening, and I'm going to figure it out tomorrow for sure if they send a person over. One, if the meter is faulty, then it's giving a bad reading. If that's the case, we can go back to Georgia Power and have a conversation, and they reimburse because of a bad meter, based on historical data, is one conversation I've already entered into with the representative. The second piece is, there's that possibility that someone may be stealing power from us, and we're not aware of that. But having a Georgia Power energy audit person to come out and audit the building will give us the answers. So, that's what I'm working on right now.
Okay, so I appreciate that you're working towards that. But the lamp post in the parking lot itself, that is a part of, you're saying, that ties into that issue?
No, no. So, the lamp posts in the parking lot are controlled by the panel boxes in the lower dark area. We found that some of the switches were turned off. I actually turned off several of the switches. Tomorrow morning, I am going back to the site, and I'm going to turn on all of the switches and see if I can get an override and turn the lights completely on to make sure all the lights that we control in the parking lot are operating as designed. But I am aware of that. Warren and I have been talking about it, and I'll have that fixed tomorrow, for sure.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And the arborist proposal? We don't have the arborist.
Yeah, we only have one at this point.
Small business grant update?
So, so far, we have 22 applications and two incomplete applications, which usually just means we have to verify their business license, and then one that applied from outside of the city. We will include, the deadline's August 11, so we have definitely more time. I do, you know, I feel like we get at least one, like, every day, so I do feel like that number's going to go up.
From the initial inquiries prior to the application being released, are you seeing that they're the same businesses? They're just following up because the application has been released?
Do you, are you asking if we're getting duplicate applications, maybe?
No.
Oh, from like, the initial inquiry? We have seen some, a few of those businesses, but not, not all of them. And we've, I want to bring this up, because I talked to two of you about it. If, say, we get more than 40 applications, the, does the council want to consider giving smaller amounts to more people? Or do we want to choose and give the $2,500 that was originally? I mean, we would have to, you know, write a letter to the grantor, which is doable, but I need to hear from the council, I mean...
What kind of timeframe do we have?
Well, it's the deadline's August 11.
Can we ask them in advance? So, we don't, I mean, if we don't get 40 applications, then that's easy. But I can't imagine it's not. Can we just ask them in advance to see how much flexibility we have?
Is there an opportunity to apply for more funding?
Not, not right now. I mean, I suspect this won't be the only round of funding we see. If you remember, a few months ago, the Development Department already had some money. You all agreed to allow them to distribute money to businesses in the city. But this particular grant through the, through the Community Development Department of the county, this will be the only fund for this particular one.
And let's lay out a minimum, say, at 1,500. So, at least if they get a grant, it's at least meaningful, get 1,500. It's probably their smallest. Is that okay?
Well, I mean, if we don't get 40 applications...
Doesn't matter.
It's a moot point. But...
But if they ask you, I'll fly.
I don't know that it's as easy as just saying, yeah, we're okay with that, because then that's going to be a whole, we're going to have to design a whole different criteria for how we're going to select who gets the full amount. Is it employees, is it square footage, is it, you know, it'll have to be something. But, you know, I mean, you know, if you're asking my opinion, which you haven't yet, I would keep it at $2,500 per business. But, you know, again, that's the council decision.
But what if we don't have enough 40 application? I mean, will we return the money to...
Oh, you mean, if there's leftover money? Yeah, we would probably try not to give it that. We might ask them if we have the opportunity to just, I don't know, select another business or something like that. They're not going to be anxious to take it back from us, because I think they're going to be confident there's enough people that need it.
If it looks like we're going to run into that, it might be a time to pick up the phone and make a few calls to some small businesses that might not have applied.
Yeah, I'll do that, because I'm the committee that will choose it. I should do that.
Thank you. Mr. Warren, you want to pick up? Public Works Discussions, bulk items, like this, to talk a little bit about Marrow Center efficiency?
I've kind of touched on the malls, Marrow Center. If there are any additional questions with regards to what we're trying to do to bring that back online. It's clear that over the course of the last several months, something has triggered an increase. Looking at historical data, we didn't experience this this time last year. So, it's clear to me that we need an energy audit to be completed by Georgia Power so they can tell us specifically what's going on.
And so, so that it won't shock your system when you see it. And what Billy specifically means is, we've gotten another power bill with yet another increase.
Right.
So, in months of the past, where we had multiple events and multiple people working in the center, it didn't rise like this. So, now, we've got no events, as we know, and we...
Nobody in the center. No one in the center.
No, well, now, there's no one in the center, but that wouldn't be measured on the most recent bill. But, I mean, it's, and, and I didn't even know people could steal power. Okay, when that came across the air today, I'm like, is that a thing? So, because something's happened, and we've got, so I'm glad to hear that if it's a faulty meter, that we have an opportunity to get reimbursed.
We have an opportunity to speak that in detail. And if we can show that historical data pretty much indicates that we've not experienced anything, then they're willing to enter into a conversation about reimbursing us for that. So, I'm going to really follow up on that in greater detail at the next meeting. If anyone wants any additional information, I'll write it. And/or, I'll be more than happy to send out an email that kind of recaps the conversation with Georgia Power so that everyone's on the same page with regards to what we're doing to try to fix that problem immediately.
Yeah, and so, some immediate steps that we've taken is we have closed the Marrow Center, no, except for Fridays, Yeah, and so some immediate steps that we've taken is we have closed the Marrow Center, no, except for Fridays where all scheduled tours or walk-in would happen on a Friday. So Warren is now sitting at City Hall so that we don't have to manage the, the air conditioning over at this Marrow Center to keep him comfortable. Um, we have reduced the hours for the second employee to, is really, we'll really start to follow events now. Um, and we did have an event on Saturday where it was the Marrow event. Um, and then we had another event on Sunday, a paid event on Sunday. So we, um, but these are not going to be enough to keep us, um, in, you know, profitable. So we thought that eliminating the opening and closing of the Marrow Center and Siemens advised us to make sure all interior doors were always closed. That would, that could cool it down more efficiently. So we'll only be cooling that, that center one day a week beyond its static temperature of seventy-five.
That is correct.
Uh, unless there is a scheduled event.
Is the office not on a, on a separate system? The office is on a separate system, but what we were finding is, uh, Warren was dropping the temperature in the space based on the ambient temperature.
And there's no sense in doing that and you can be here.
A little costly.
Yeah, that's what was costing us money.
Yeah, so we decided to relocate him here and, and reduce that cost altogether. The other item on the list is, um, I'd like to talk about the, uh, lighting list. Uh, I did have a conversation with Gene Edwards regarding our lights throughout the city. There are some things that we need to do a little bit better job of. Uh, one happens to be, there are lights that are on poles that are in right of ways whereby we have trees that are actually blocking some of the light. Which means the illumination coming to the ground is not making it there, so it's a little darker than what it should be. So we're going to, Gene and I have had some conversations. There are some things that we can do on our end. But there are also some things the residents can do, uh, because some of the lights where they're actually located are the residents' trees are creating part of the problem. So we're going to have to enter into some conversations with residents uh, and work together as a team to figure out how we go about fixing that problem. The second thing is we have a lot of high sodium pressured lights throughout the city. That's costing us a lot of money. So Georgia Power is trying to pull together something as quickly as possible to send to us that pretty much says, hey, we're willing to basically roll out a program where we come in and remove all the high sodium lights and come back with LEDs. Now, that's coming at some point. Uh, I think that's going to be very beneficial. The savings could be immediately fifteen to twenty percent easier as a result of addressing all of the lights. Won't know until we do some additional studies, but I'm working with Gene Edwards on that now.
And because we did, as I mentioned before, we did some replacement of LED lights not, not too many years ago.
Right, there, in, in the residential, in the neighborhoods, there are LED lights. The lights that I'm making reference to are the, the lights that are on the poles that look like a little big square box. And those are higher pressured sodium lights. Those are going to be antiquated in another couple of years. You won't be able to get the bulbs. So we're going to have to do something. The question becomes, is Georgia Power willing to come to us with a very good package that will help us migrate into this new program and not cost us money, uh, on the, on the, on the back end? So I'm working very close with them on that. Uh, the last thing I wanted to kind of report on is the bulk pickup. So I've been riding, uh, the city, looking at what's out. I've also followed the truck to see what's going on, how they do it. I will say that, um, and, and I'm in the process of assessing our personnel, um, and what we do on a day-to-day basis. In my professional opinion, the possibility is great. There needs to be some modifications made in our department to accommodate. And I think, uh, a discussion will have to be held around, um, possibly a piece of small equipment, nothing large, a piece of small equipment to assist. But I think it's something that we may be able to, to do down, down the road, but right now. I can honestly tell you that based on what we do day in and day out, which is pretty much maintain potholes, maintain storm drains, maintain grass, maintain a variation of, uh, building operation type components as well as lawn service maintenance type stuff. Uh, we are, we're going to have to make some adjustments and, and so I'm going to enter into a conversation with the city manager in greater detail that pretty much outlines the program. But I have been able to pull some hard, fast data, uh, that will help drive and help everyone to understand why I feel so adamant that we need to do something different and do it fast. If we're going to be a city of world class and we're going to look impeccable, we're going to have to change what we do and how we do it. And that's going to have to get, that's, for me, that's getting everyone to buy in to this new concept, this new plan that I've been pretty much rolling out. On a positive note, with the little team that we've got, plus the assistance of the community service program and a few inmates here and there every now and then, we've made tremendous strides in making our city look a little better, a little cleaner, a, a little brighter. Uh, we started this week, this past, well, actually this past Thursday. We started, uh, a program where we actually went out and started washing our road signs. And we did twenty-six signs in less than two hours. And the signs came out extremely beautiful. They're clean. They're, they don't have the green dirt all over them. And so what we plan to do is every Thursday, we're going to roll out, first thing Thursday morning, we're going to go in separate directions and we're going to start cleaning signs until we get every sign in the city and every white pole in the city completely clean. And, and staff understands that it's not optional. This is something that we should have been doing. We didn't do it. We need to do it. And we're just going to get, we're just going to do it. We're just going to make the time to do it. But for me, um, my data thus far is telling me that based on what we used to do and based on what we need to do, it's clear that Public Works doesn't have enough personnel to do that. And so I'm going to enter into a conversation, like I said, with the city manager that says, here's, here's what we have. And here's what we need to do. And here's the reason why. And here's the best practices. And here's what we can do with our budget. Because I know that right now, uh, staying within the parameters of a budget is, is critical. And I don't want to put ourselves in a pickle where, you know, we, you know, the economy tanks and we have to do something different. I don't want to do that. So, so I personally have, have been going out, doing a lot of stuff and so you may have been driving around. I know the city manager has caught me on a number of occasions with backpack sprayers on and riding the back of trucks, whatever it takes is my motto. Yeah, so whatever it takes to get this city to where it needs to be, that's what we're going to do. But we're going to be smart about it. We're not going to work harder. We're going to work smarter. And that's what I'm working on with the team right now is to get them to understand what we used to do, that was fine. What we're going to do today, it's a little bit different, but it's going to work. And that's pretty much where we're at right now. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Georgia Power would trim the, um, power lines from, trees from the power lines. Is that correct? They don't do the light poles?
No, ma'am. So, so what happens is, um, depending on where the tree actually is located, uh, they do a portion. So, so what I would end up doing is, let's say I'm on Marrow Road and I have a light that's in the right of way. I'm going to call Georgia Power. They're going to send their arborist out. He's going to assess that tree. And he's going to tell me specifically what he can do versus what I need to do. And he'll do the same thing for the resident in the event that a resident has a tree that's overgrown and the, the canopy actually is now impeding into the right of way and it's actually, uh, it's clouding the illumination of the light getting in the ground. They'll also do that too. So the first step is to get Georgia Power out here when we do have a situation with a tree and have them to tell us specifically. Is this something you guys can help us with or is this something that we have to take on? So that, that's the very first step and then we take it from there. Yes, ma'am. Before we cut down your tree in your yard.
Well, no, they're not my trees.
Might lean over just a little bit.
It's not my trees. It's, it's either your tree or the county's tree.
Oh, okay.
Central Park's trees.
But, but somebody's tree. So before we
Yes.
You've all seen where, you know, they, they just cut the top off.
Yeah.
Let's, let's try to do a little better job than that. Yeah. And just have a good conversation. Yeah, the arborists did, Gene did say the arborist that they have on staff is a, he's a very good guy. And that he's, he's a tree, he's a tree guy. He, you know, so he's going to come out and he's going to only cut what needs to be cut to make it work for, for the city. He's not going to go out there and top, top a tree off and
He must not be the one that cuts in front of the plate, has he?
No. Any other questions for Billy before we go?
Oh, um, I just want to, is, uh, Clay and Senator, uh, I mean, Clay and I Senator, Edward.
Uh, that's, that's a credit enforcement issue.
Okay.
The, the doctor in the medical facility over at, uh,
Clay and I Senator.
Clay and I Senator, on the back on the right. It, it done very well.
Rod?
Yes. Just, uh, while we're here, put the right pinhole on the right project.
The LED lights for the, this around area for around the city?
Yes, sir.
That, that might, must look better at night.
Yes, and as a matter of fact, uh, if you happen to see a light pole with a yellow ribbon on it, that's one that we've already called in and we're waiting for Georgia Power to come out and make the repair. I'm hitting old streets at one time. So you might see seven, eight poles on one street with ribbons on them. Those lights aren't working. I'm coming in at six-thirty in the morning and I'm riding the neighborhoods and I'm checking. And I'm personally putting ribbons on poles myself.
I caught you three times in a row.
I wanted to look nice. I mean, there's only one way to get there. And if you don't have enough staff, you do what you have to do to make it happen.
Appreciate it.
And the staff, the team appreciates that also. Uh, not only, uh, the five guys that I have, but I, I will say that even the inmates that we picked up these last few weeks, they've been consistently the same two guys. They're some of the hardest working persons that I've ever worked with. And then the community service workers that we've recently gotten. To date, we've only had six people. Uh, of the six, only one has failed to do what he's supposed to be doing. And we're going to send him back to court and let court deal with him. But everyone else, I can put them on curbside. I tell them to do A, B, C. They do A, B, C. And so you'll see a decrease in the overall amount of paper on the curbs. Uh, and we're going to keep it that way. Now that we've got this community program in place, I think that's going to be a bonus for us in the long haul.
I do want to throw this out quickly because I know we have to move into our public meetings, but, um, I don't want to stay too long on the topic, Dorothy, your favorite topic of trash. I think the council and Public Works, we need to consider a, a plan for either trash can receptacles at, uh, bus stops, some, some extension of beautification for our high-traffic areas that will be, um, I, you know, manageable for the staff that we have.
Yes, ma'am, and I concur one hundred percent because on, uh, on South Lake Parkway, I can go over and re, and remove trash today. And I can go back in the morning and it'd be twice as much trash there than the day before. And I think partially because people standing there, they drink, eat, and they just throw paper on the ground. So I'm going to visit with the city manager. There are three locations right now that I know of that if I could get a trash can put there, a decorative trash can, that's something that makes the city look nice. I think that's going to resolve a lot of our problems in those three areas. And then going forward, we'll just assess and make, and when we see a need, we'll bring it up. We'll have a discussion. And, and if funding is available so that we can get them, then we will move on that swiftly.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ben, you got any comments? Good. Thank you so much. And, uh, we'll go right into the formal meeting agenda and, uh, we'll call the board July twentieth, correct? The gentleman.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Mr. Rodriguez. Um, and I know this is in relation to the day of the dead. I'll miss.
Do you, you want to sit? You can, you can join me indeed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, I'm back for a proposal. We have two options.
Yep.
For, uh, the other quarters. So probably needed for, when I'm speaking with numbers or, or money, probably need the help. I want to make sure that this is good. For translator, probably, yes, maybe you can help me probably.
No, I'll be, thank you.
Thank you.
Your English isn't that bad. I'm sorry, others can.
That's right. Thank you. But, uh, we've got two proposals for, uh, the Old Town Marrow and, uh, Freedom Fest. Trim, um, in a, uh, and this is two options for now. Prices included and explain the, the list about the budget for different, uh, services. But, uh, basically, um, for me, it's more important that my staff, my people, you know, everything look good and, uh, safe for everything. You know, for social distancing or everything look clean and everybody have a specific change.
Which, which one did you prefer? Yeah, you gave us two, two, two different locations. Which one did you prefer?
For me?
Yeah.
Old Town.
The pricing was similar. The same. Um, and, and, and basically that, the, the funding he's requesting, that's coming out of the development fund of some sort, right? So it's a combination. Is there any questions? And I guess we, we probably should have put that on the consent agenda, I guess. Cause you're looking for the authorization moving forward. If you don't have any funding, it's going to make it a little complicated for you.
He's supposed to have an answer today or soon. He's supposed to, he's better. He's short time for meeting now.
Well, the good news is we're, we're used to keeping our word. So if, if we reach a conclusion, we ought to be able to do something.
Well, just like the onsite paving, you know, you can, as long as nobody adjusts to move forward, then we can ratify it at the next meeting.
Cause it's, well, it's under the number, right?
Under the number.
No capabilities up to a certain amount?
Oh, well, no, it's a couple thousand dollars over my number, but you still have to approve it. But again, you have to spend it all by the next meeting. It's just the motion forward that he gets approval for and then we can ratify it at the next meeting.
Okay, well, let's ask this question. Um, any, any objections to his, the proposal he's choosing to be able to use Old Town Mall for Day of the Dead?
Well, I, I do have a question about parking.
Okay.
What's the accommodations?
How many people show up today?
Well, and that's what my question was is for the proposal, either one, how many people are you planning on? What is that for?
Is for maximum, uh, it's a dozen or working for five hundred people.
So five hundred to a thousand?
Yeah. Then depending the decisions for the city or the government about distancing or, you know, he has too much problem to say stop his pool or, you know, have problems ahead on making distancing and put the signs in all, in all, yeah. So social distancing, sixth of distancing, community hands.
Well, we know that the property over there, and, and the question if you're talking about parking is owned by Sears. And we've got the lady's name.
But isn't the, isn't the two point three acres for the, for the overflow parking that belongs to the mall now because they bought JCPenney? Isn't that just the sidewalk that they have to walk down on the same side of the road? If, if we couldn't get approval for the mall, we could, from Sears, maybe the mall would approve us using that, that, uh, it's not surfaced.
Yeah, well, and, and the mall also owns the piece right beside it. It's just the one that's directly across from it's partially Sears. But I'm too lucky. It's, it's a mention. Uh, cause that answered the question.
So I, I feel like, you know, again, you would imagine that everybody's going to be happy about it, but and since we had it at the Marrow Center, it would just be a conversation with the mall saying, it's just kind of a shift around. Same, possibly the same number of people just on a different corner from the mall. So, uh, but to your point, if, if the mall does not agree to it.
Well, that makes it a little complicated, but
I mean, the options in the parking, you know, plan, you see a plan, two, three different options. So if you have any other options, there's, let me know, uh, the, the, two, three different points in all around the map for, uh, the parking. They, they have an access for
Well, all, all of the parts of East Cat List is over on, you know, that is.
I'm putting a statue for all.
The green space up against the interstate and that would, that would do a lot.
Yeah, to the left of the doctor.
Let, let me interject, um, if I might. Um, I appreciate all of the information regarding the proposal and it's with regard to you and your organization pulling off the event for Day of the Dead. But what we don't have is an understanding of what the city's responsibility would be and what the city would have to spend with regard to getting Old Town Marrow up to par to host any type of event where these, these rides and games and these interactions for the Day of the Dead, they're spread out over the entire property. What is going to be, uh, based on the current condition of the buildings? What is going to be the access? I think we need
It's not using the building, so.
I understand it's not using the buildings, but I understand it's not using the buildings, but.
But I'm walking and I'm checking and I probably need your operation and checking with us services for the security and the porch. And that's it. It's not possible to use the porch, put it down as porch. That's it. Not in the particular buildings or the power or anything.
I understand you're, you're, you're not saying going in and out of buildings, using the buildings specifically, but the condition that the buildings are in now, the condition that, um, would be appropriate for the spacing of all these games, rides and these interactions, what is this, what is going to be the cost to the city to quote unquote, bring that property up to par where it's usable and enjoyable and not an eyesore? What is, what is that going to cost? There's nothing, no evaluation of that, um.
Is there a, uh, requirement to, to be, uh, I suppose you?
You're getting so, if you, you're getting a number in what will cost to repair the property? Paint it, or repair it, so that when people come, it doesn't look abandoned.
No, we can't repair it. I think that's the important thing. We want it to be clean and secure.
Feel that it needs to be fixed. That's the important part. Um, they could, uh, just to secure. Give me a, uh, the, the.
It looks good, that's, 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 as it is, it's.
The way that it is now.
Perfecto.
It's perfect.
So we're going to, that's, that's, that's.
We just want to make sure that it's cleaned and then the, the buildings are secured.
Yeah, those are, this.
So what is that cost to the city in order to?
And what will cost to the city?
I agree with you.
Because I, I, I appreciate that he's saying it's perfect, but it's not.
Because she understands that you're saying that it's perfect, but for her, it's not.
Because I've walked it and only have to clean it and ensure that certain areas are still good, like the front doors. And if it's used, and clean it, it's all good.
I had the opportunity of walking the property and I understand, but there is certain areas that are, that we would need to just secure and for the event, it would be fine.
When you say secure, what do you mean?
When you say that you want it, uh, I said, uh, security, uh, for, for, uh, what, uh, what?
We want to use the areas, um, for example, the porch. You can speak, I can translate if you want. Uh, we can use the porch if we're permitted and only subbing porch, but not inside the houses, only the porch. When, if we're not permitted, we use the, uh, outside the porch.
Permission, we can use.
And all the rest of the walk-in yard, so we're, the, the avenues.
And everyone will just be walking on the avenues, on the streets.
Okay, so, um, I, I appreciate your response. I appreciate his response because it's from the perspective of the event itself. I am asking the question with regard to the city's responsibility to make sure that the property is actually in fact up to par and usable for such an event. I, I understand that he's talking about securing buildings. I am talking about the cost to do such. And it may not be the question that he can answer with regard to this budget. I am putting this question to the council itself.
The question that she has more or less doesn't have to do with you, with the event, but more for the city. She, she wants to know how, not to secure the, the property, but for it to be good when people come and not be a disaster or, 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 so she, the question is not for you, it's for the council, to know how much to pay to repair the property so that when they, they have the event, it's good.
Yo, on my part, it's only to clean up the areas. Uh, and tal, talvez poner algunos, uh, como quadros or pictures or something to cover hacia dentro of the buildings.
And what we can do is, um, put a picture to, so when you look inside of the building, there's a picture. You're saying the window?
Si, windows or doors.
And the doors or the windows to, uh, entonces when you have the quadro, it will seem like it's inside the house?
We have a designer that's going to make pictures and we're going to put them in the doors as well as the windows.
So when people look, it makes it look like they're looking into the house with maybe a skeleton face or, um, the.
Calaveritas de azúcar.
Uh, I don't know how to say it in English, the, the painted faces, um.
The sugar skulls?
Like a sugar skull, yes. The persons who are, uh, dressed with the sugar skulls, yes.
And, and si hay, si el costo, por lo que vimos, nosotros podemos arreglar todo eso. Solo que nos autoricen. Si la ciudad puede hacerlo por nosotros, sería de ayuda, pero podemos hacerlo nosotros.
And the price that I provided, um, has that in there, uh, if, we've already taken that into consideration and that is in there. Now, if the city would like to do it for us, we would appreciate that. However, the price is listed in.
Artists.
Uh, it, it is listed in the proposal.
So we just have to get it, and the city.
Is that, is that a similar budget to what they did last year for the event?
And the proposal, uh, the, the, the cost was the same?
Yeah, yes.
So we have an opportunity, we have a person who wants it. Why don't we get out of their way?
So you're, so, so in getting out of their way, are, are you saying that whatever responsibilities the city has to make sure that the buildings are, appear appropriate, are secured themselves, we're moving out of the way so that he can do it? Is that, is that what you're saying?
He's putting pictures in the windows, true?
From the outside, is that right?
Outside, yeah.
Correct, yeah, correct.
The blocks, the blocks and all around the houses.
Your buildings are secure. You, you basically lock the door. Most of the doors are locked now. Yeah, so you look at it and say, why not?
Probably the better options, you want to walk if any people's, services people, the, any, uh, employer with people walking to me.
Yeah, he would like to do a walkthrough with maybe Public Works to, um, to make sure that there's, that everything is covered, that there's no areas that they've missed and that way it could be the city's, um, and as well as, uh, Danceando coming together to make sure that those things are, are taken care of.
Let me show, let me show you what is, what is the best options for the events and make everything cleaner, look good. But probably most of the better options for the normal people, the buildings is, you know, glass is broken or the doors is open, but for this event, it is, it's like a Halloween, but nope. It's meant Latin American. Cool.
I, I had the pleasure of attending the, the event at the Morrow Center and I did enjoy myself. Um, so again, the question that I have asked, um, with regard to, you're saying now walking through with city, um, representatives, fire and, and police and public work, the city understanding if there are things that need to be done, what is the cost of that to make sure that the buildings and whatever else is secure in the manner that it should be, um, presentable for an event? That is the question that I've been asking. I do appreciate the, the proposal. I do appreciate, don't get me wrong, but I feel like I've been asking a question that has been danced around. And I'm just trying to understand what it's going to cost. If there's a cost to the city to make sure that Old Town is, uh, can, can handle this event, whether it's appearance, safety, whatever the case may be, um, that answer hasn't been answered. That, that question hasn't been answered.
Ma'am, so obviously we don't know if there's, if, if the council wants to replace all the windows before that event. We don't have a cost yet. If we're going to use.
But he doesn't want to.
I know, but that's what I'm saying is, is that I'm trying to, to say that if the question is, what are you going to invest, our, our, as of right now, our intention is not to invest anything over and above what it would take to go out and sweep up because we can't leave broken glass, um, or the public works department. Now, this does not consider any overtime. If there were going to be police officers that we would pay to help secure it, but we don't have a current plan to spend money.
If that's what you're asking.
There is not a cost associated with that because we don't plan to do it.
Okay, and so, you know, based on the mayor's statement, we're, we're saying as a city, we're going to move out of the way.
Well, or if, if the council were to decide we want to fix X, Y, and Z, then we can get a cost. But right now, there's no intention to spend anything, I guess, is what I'm saying. If that's answering your question.
I, I think, if I may, um, we have not approved any other monies other than what the event normally would cost. Is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, from the day, I mean, the Morrow Center. So we're not looking to invest any money in repairing, upgrading, doing any, anything to, to Old Town Morrow other than letting them come in and bring whatever it is that they're bringing in with this, for this amount.
For this event. Now, at some point, when we start to get other pieces together, you know, that's a different discussion for a different day. Um, but as it currently sits, it's a haunted house concept and we've got one of the better ones out there and he's willing to use it and he's happy to have it. Um, and we could bring a couple thousand people to the city one night.
Well, my only concern is the parking, so, and, uh, safety. My, those are my concerns.
But again, if, if the cost that would be associated would be, if, like with Freedom Fest this year, we paid city staff to be there because we didn't, we weren't sure how it was all going to play out. So that cost is not considered in here, should that be an expense.
But if we held it over at Reynolds Road, we'd still have that situation.
I mean, yeah, where, wherever the event is, that would probably be an additional cost.
Is there any objection to letting them move forward outside of what was already stated?
I have no objections about parking and safety. My only concern is.
So I, I'm good with that, if I may.
Dan, you good? All right, we've got your objections.
My serious concerns, yes.
All right, so let's, well, we'll put it on the agenda for a formal approval at the next one. Uh, but in the meantime, you know, this council's pretty good about keeping its word. If we tell you we're going to, we're going to do it, uh, but get with, um, the police chief and, uh, public works. And I know you've walked the property already before, but just, just that one last shot, just to make sure you don't want to change your mind. That'll work for you?
Yeah, if you have too much problem with cities, you can play for Freedom, Freedom Medal. So for me, you say for me, it's.
Old Town, but.
It's the, for the city, it's better option Freedom.
No, we're, we're good, we're good. Just, you know, do a little more homework just to make sure you should, okay?
Thank you.
You understand?
You can speak more.
Si, si, si. Then, you're saying that, that, they're going to go forward with the Old Town. And then, if you can have a seat with, um, with the chief of the police, and also with the bombers, and the director of public works, so that you can talk and, and, and walk the property another time to be sure that you have all the necessary for the event. Because they want to do it there, but if it's a case in the future, but more or less, they're going to go forward with the Old Town.
Okay.
Yeah, which one she's in?
Thanks, Dan. Item number eight, um, à la carte marketing, R and B. Uh, we had a, a series of individuals and, and the idea of this was to, to try to help, uh, the Morrow Center itself in terms of some marketing. You know, there's a recommendation from, uh, the, the staff to pick, uh, Hillary Zodi. Um, I, I know a number of people have had a chance to read that. It's fairly in-depth. Um, and I, I've had a chance to read it too and I, I can't reach a conclusion that if it was my dollars, that irrespective of which project they were mentioning in there, that I would pick one, right?
So if, if I can say a couple things, now remember, because it's a professional service, you don't have to pick one, okay? We did it out to try and see who would participate in the bid.
Correct.
As for the proposals, but as a professional service, you can choose a marketer without doing a call for proposal.
Yeah, but that wasn't the issue.
So I'm just saying, if it's not one of.
But if we took her proposal and the proposal breaks down some itemized lists of things that she would recommend and there's a cost number to go with some of that, um, it's, it's just like in today's world, you would, you would look at it and say, let's say we did an advertisement on a radio. That was one of the options in here. I, I'm not sure that that is going to, you know, give you a return on your five grand, not today, right? Uh, if, you know, in the past, you had some discussions about reaching out to planners, event planners and things like that. Those people are suffering. Yes, that makes a lot of sense. Um, reaching out to, um, to, to people that actually, uh, conduct weddings, you know, people that, um, you know, wedding registries, different things along those lines. That makes sense. Um, but it, it wasn't complete enough where you'd say everything that they had was almost redundant. Everybody wants to update your webpage. Everybody wants to give you a wrap card. No, no one wants to tell you where you're going to send it or how you're going to do that or is that person really going to have a wedding or an event or something like that? So, yes, to the thought process, but in all of these, I, I didn't see anything in there that, that really Warren didn't come up with almost on his own.
Which is sort of why we seem to have this circular conversation about marketing where whatever generation of people are talking about it, everybody wants to do marketing, but when it comes down to paying for marketing, it's hard sometimes because it looks like stuff we can do ourselves. So, um, you know, we're, but I, I just, we certainly are, we've always reached out to wedding planners. That's no, that's been who's filled the Morrow Center every weekend since, you know, the beginning of time. You know, we are doing a more specific job of reaching out to other event planners, but it's just, you know, just remember, we want to do some marketing and at some point, i- if we're just not doing it amongst ourselves, we're hiring somebody to do it. It doesn't have to be one of these proposals. It doesn't even have to be signing a contract. We can call, say, hey, we want this done, you know, what you going to charge me? But, um, I just, you know, just remind us is that we started this conversation saying we've never marketed the Morrow Center, really. So we can find ourselves right back at that starting point and not marketing it again. And so at some point, we have to figure out what are we going to spend, how are we going to market, market the Morrow Center? And it's going to probably include somebody who is skilled as a marketer as opposed to just, you know, me who can throw something together. You see what I'm saying? So, I mean, I hear what you're saying and I don't disagree, which is why it's sort of difficult to make a staff recommendation, but I want to make sure we're keeping this conversation alive because I felt like this council was very specific in wanting marketing dollars spent at the Morrow Center.
I think we have to.
Yeah, but.
But in the, in the original, the idea was, you know, this is what we're doing in-house. And we looked at some proposals from a product company and there was the argument that said we need to look at more proposals from other product companies, which we've now done, right? Um, I, I, you're, you're almost better off just saying, because they literally are the same? I haven't seen anything that would say, you know, keep Warren from doing that. Go back to his original proposal, pick one that makes sense, but there is, there is a point that some of the, you know, example, advertising at the airport was one of the options, right? There's nobody at the airport. So that probably isn't one that matters.
That was, that was sort of part of a plan before all of this happened, but.
Right, but, but.
But again.
If you implemented that plan right now, we'd have a whole bunch of marketing sitting up there not being seen by anyone.
But you, you, that goes back to asking people who aren't marketers to do the marketing. And we can do that and just remind us at the start of the conversation, which was this realization that nobody had ever, nobody skilled in marketing had ever done any marketing for the Morrow Center. So I, it even makes sense to me not to choose somebody because there's not a glaring result, but at some point, we're going to have to engage with some marketers, a piece at a time, whatever. But, you know, we, it's, the person who manages it is not going to be necessarily the person who can market it the way it needs to be marketed.
Yeah, and unfortunately with marketing, it's hard to determine results.
Exactly.
You know, Coca-Cola can put up a sign and they're just reminding you to drink it. In, in our case, you know, we're, we're not known. So, so we got to do something. Conversation?
We're at two thirty-three.
I'm not sure that's going to help, but. But, conversation? Ms. René?
Um, I, I guess we could circle the conversation back to, to Warren, um, based on his marketing strategy, the, the, the items that he laid forth, uh, which are very similar to what this à la carte, uh, look is doing, uh, whether or not we say out of the list of things that he targeted and he brought to us previously over the next six months, let's pick one or two that he can manage, um, and then possibly see, you know, give a, give a window of time to deliver that, that particular item.
Let's go back to the list of items that he's suggesting and we could have picked, you know, those items that we think that are, might go to work or something. We can discuss with that. I have a problem there.
Ms. Pen?
Agree with Councilwoman. Let's look at the, uh, where that practical has the most effective during this time of the pandemic, uh, and then to see which applies to us and which would be most effective, uh, for us. And then, uh. during this time of the pandemic, and then to see which applies to us and which would be most effective for us. And then we'll get to that.
All right, let's do this. We've obviously got his proposal. We just don't have it for us. And let's try to rank order. You know, if we send it out to everybody, I think there's a list in there of seven or eight. You know, four of them probably make no logical sense whatsoever. But just, just try to rank order and say, if you had to pick one, let's, let's pick one.
And that sounds great, but we have to concede to the fact, no, Councilman Boone, your background may speak to this, but we aren't marketers, and we're going to be determining what will be the most effective.
But we can explain.
That's the only thing that works.
See what makes sense. I'm on the. Reading that, some of these people are treating it like lawyers. Yeah, everybody wants a $5,000, $10,000 retainer, $200 an hour, and no guarantee of any type of results. I take my chances. I can say, okay, it may not be an expertise. But let's ask this. Let's, let's assume that rack cards comes out there. It's a pretty heavy number. It probably does. We need to ask Warren, you know, there's, there's some lists available, there's some mailing lists available, and there's, there's companies that sell that, you know, and that's just a matter of just figuring out what it's going to take. Because if those rack cards are bigger than traditional postage size, your postage carries a cost number, and then those people who do direct mail print are better associated with actually delivering, right? It's not about producing a card. It's what's it going to cost to send it out to these lists? And they can do the demographics, and they could say, all right, I just want, you know, business hours of a certain X, you know, within a certain drive mile or something like that. Because that would be a cost number that's not associated to the way you have it. But at least we know they're tangible to have it in their hands.
So back to what I said prior to Councilman Boone, inquiring with Warren, getting the list, we prioritize, but also seeing what is possible for him to deliver within a certain amount of time.
Item number nine, there was some discussion about the ethics policy for the city. The city's got a policy. We asked for the Georgia Municipal Association's latest policy, and that was delivered to a number of people for your review. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to see it or not. The city's policy is quite interesting. It lets me, as mayor, decide two or three members.
We need to change that.
Yeah. So in the.
It was a hatchet policy that was used in the past, but.
In the packet, it, it reads strange. There's a lot of parentheses and.
Wait, wait, do you talk about the GMA?
Just all of, all of the characters.
Well, this, the first part is what's actually in your, in your code right now.
Yeah, I understand that, but even that, that reads, there are several parentheses throughout the policy, so it's not reading very clear. I brought my book because I have it in my book.
Yeah, your copy is.
I have another copy here if you'd like to take a look.
The GMA, the GMA stamp reads, reads normal.
But what I do know of it is just sit there and go look. Georgia law also has ethics, you know, in terms of what you can and cannot do. You can't buy property, sell property, you know, do all kinds of things to benefit yourself. And there's rules and regulations, right? And that's, that's one. You can't violate that. Whether it's any policy, if the city comes up with its own policy that basically decides that the mayor gets to decide whether you're a convict or not, maybe that's not the best policy in the world. That's what I'd say. Additionally, just because I disagree with you politically, doesn't mean that I get the day to basically take you out, right? And that policy pretty much has been used to that purpose in the past. It's not a good policy, right? A good policy is basically you treat people like you want to be treated. Don't buy cheap steel, da-da-da-da. And if you want a balance, then unelect people. There's lots of politicians out there you may not like today. Hope to be able to vote for them in the near future or vote against them in the near future. That's what an election's for, right? Quite honestly, we elect idiots every day. I might be one of them. That's what you want to wish, right? But that, that doesn't give people the right to, to use something to hurt people's reputation, where we get you tangled up in a process because we have an opinion, you know? And in this particular case, the process is written so that I got a lot of power. I don't think that needs to stay in there. Let's go back to common sense. Let's pass a policy that appears to pass, right? A city of ethics, we were a city of ethics years ago. Let's use something that makes some sense. But let's take away the weapons. The best weapon is you talk to your citizens, and your citizens get to come up here and say, I don't like what you're doing, right? That's how that works. I'm not going to vote for you in the future. That's how that works, right? But letting me decide your politics for you, or picking a band of people, you know, as politely as we want, Ms. Hargis is a very polite person, you know? I'm sure she will vote her conscience, right? But, you know, person X, you won't know them. You don't know if they're aligned in interest with whoever's sitting up here or not. And that isn't fair. Politics is a rough enough sport. Kind of put away the knives. And say, let's pass a policy that appears to pass. Understand that there are laws. If you break the law, big old problem. But you can't crush my reputation and then say, so many years later, oops, my bad. I mean, you can't, because you just did it, you know? But that crux can stop. So let's pass something that makes some sense, that's fair. That regardless of what gender you're sitting, regardless of whether it's Democrat or Republican, we're no, we're not, but this is the same, you know? One day, the votes will go one day, and the next day, the votes go the other. So that's not good for the city. And a policy that I'm saying, as vindictive as it comes, and just that's, that's wonderful for me and terrible for everybody else. I can show that's a good idea. I pass. I do know this, though. We only have the GMA policy, and it appears that the other one is not in there 100%. So if somebody else has a policy, and what we'll do is we'll defer, is to say, there are other policies out there, okay, if something's reasonable, then let's find out what they'll. But, but if you want to know, you know, the right way to do something, you know, when you, when you get charged with something, there's a jury. Prosecutors over there, you're over here, you get a number of strikes. Not somebody, somebody picks, but universal people that are out there, you get a number of strikes, they get a number of strikes. You actually get a defense. And most of what you're seeing right here, you're not getting any of the above.
For a board of ethics, I believe it's something, a mechanism that's there for when it is needed, and everybody understands it. And I think what it does is it helps everyone to understand what we are supposed to be doing and not supposed to be doing, not for any individual person.
But when you start appointing people to an ethics board, now you're getting into some interesting politics. And anyone who says that you're not getting into politics, all I would say is, who's sitting on the board today? Oh, my John, we've never appointed anybody to that board, really? If that was so important, I'm, I'm sure we would have done so what we did. And you go, that's right. Let's use a little common sense. Now, that being said, I'm not saying GMA, and that's the Georgia Municipal Association, for those who don't know. That is their model ordinance, right? To, I mean, per word, you know? So you look at that, and you go, other people pass that. That's why they get the certified city of ethics. And it still allows you to have an opinion, right? And nobody's faulting you for whatever your opinion is, by the way. I don't have to agree with you, but you have a right to, right? We just had all kinds of citizens' comments. You notice nobody said, you only got three minutes, you're not a citizen, shut up, sit down? That's, that's not who we are, you know? So we're, we're on the right path. You have good intentions. And look at the people out here. Yeah, y'all are pretty smart. And I got a feeling if it doesn't smell right, y'all shot, I think you'll be fine. But if somebody has a model ordinance that they think might be, you know, a good option, put it on the table. GMA's a good company, a good option, yeah.
So do I hear, for the staff's purposes, the intention is to replace our current ethics ordinance with either the GMA model ordinance or perhaps another ordinance? And are you asking us to find some model ordinances, or is this what you're asking your council?
Well, GMA is basically where you would normally look, but we realize some people here have access to others, you know? So it's just being open, and say, if you've got one, then let's see it.
Can we compare what we have already with what the GMA is?
Well, you know, some of them are in your packet.
It's in the packet. You know, we, we also have legal counsel that we can inquire if they have something that they can put, put their hands on readily. I think it is worth us updating the ordinance because it, it does read very specific, and it allows for not enough, not enough depth to appoint, nominate, secure people to participate in the board, and I wouldn't want us to go in that direction. We need to be very clear and intentional about how we create the board. I feel like there is a need for it. Common sense isn't always common, so, you know, we can always say, well, it's common sense, but some things might not be common sense. And if there is a vehicle and a, and a board that, if there is an issue that comes up and it can be addressed through that board, then, you know, we need to have all the tools available to be a, a city that's on point.
And my answer to that, just reiterating it, the city doesn't need a board, right? The city needs your policy. There are laws. If you feel somebody broke the law, you got avenues to your all-day loan. You don't like my opinion, unelect me. That's how it works, right? Setting up boards just leads you to a problem. All we're doing is asking somebody who doesn't know us, or in some cases, maybe does know me very well, right? To reach a conclusion that's supposedly unbiased, and we know that's not probably how it's going to work. So I would adopt GMA's model ordinance, and I'm open to others. But the hatchet stuff just isn't going to work. But let's, let's pick it up, and we'll see what we got. Any other comments on that, LeBron? Juneteenth, Old Town Marlow, there was a discussion. I don't know if it's going to become a national holiday. It seemed to be, you know, a move event to basically change it from Columbus State. I don't know if that's going to be successful or not. But whether it is or it isn't, it's important to you, you know? So then the question would be, can we turn that into an event that would, would make sense? Barbecue sometime.
Columbus State?
Well, there was, there was a move to change the federal holiday from Columbus State to Juneteenth. There's nothing?
I heard it, but.
And it actually had some wings there for a minute, you know? So you just look at it and say, okay. But whether it becomes a national holiday or not, doesn't mean we have to necessarily wait. If it's important to you, which we believe it is, then, then that's an opportunity for this city to celebrate. I'm all about a party. And anything we can do that consistently pulls us together is probably a good thing.
Well, for me, and I don't know, for you, Old Town Marlow and Juneteenth, they, they don't go together, okay? Old Town Marlow is just that, Old Town Marlow. Juneteenth is about freedom of slaves. We have a situation in Old Town Marlow that reminds people of the plantation house. That, that will not work for Juneteenth. It will not work for me.
From the structure of a, of a property?
The whole premise of Old Town Marlow is a place where my ancestors could not go into town and in that situation. That would not be the appropriate place for Juneteenth.
But if I followed that argument, it would be any time.
For the first event for the city of Marlow to celebrate Juneteenth, Old Town Marlow is not the location.
I'm stuck on the location. I'm more interested in the event.
Okay.
If you're interested in a different location.
Different location.
And the idea is it's a town center, just make it work, but if, if, and, and.
And I'm, I'm only saying that because it was put on here.
That's correct.
We didn't discuss the location. So it was cho, it was chosen, but I'm just saying that, for me, it, it is not the right location because it, it, it strikes something dead.
Well, we have more than one option.
Freedom Fest field. It, it brings freedom, and that's the point, but Old Town Marlow is not.
We have Brady Man's.
Or Marlow City.
Yeah, City Hall's not big enough to really hold that event. It really brings people here.
Old Town Marlow, I do agree with you, Dorothy.
Yeah, Old Town Marlow is not the location for Juneteenth.
I don't have a problem with it.
I just wanted to point that out because.
One of the ideas behind the space, it was if we stayed with a lower level fireworks display, it's an easier place to do it. It's a little more complicated over there, but probably not impossible.
Well, Warren, we told that we could not do fireworks at Old Town Hall? Because of the freeway?
We've done fireworks at Old Town Marlow before. We shot a building at South Lake Hall, actually, twice. We did one, uh, two for July 4th, and we did one for one of the meters. Sure.
I'm sure I've heard that, that that's not safe to do.
Yeah, that's not the same information that we've been given in the previous council meetings.
Do you know, Chief?
Oh, no, I guarantee we've done it. You can ask John Zetsch. I mean, he's been doing fireworks stuff for every time. The other thing you remember about the, the South Lake, when you did it, is at the top, you know, it's like doing it at London Square. You're sitting on asphalt and different things like that. And then they're, they actually poured off a portion of the parking lot for some of the air flow. It just depends on how, how you lay it out. But easy enough. That, that's less of a concern. The idea is have a good time.
I'm just looking at, is that back-to-back weekends for Freedom Fest and Juneteenth? Does that matter?
Is it?
That's true. Because the 26th is the Saturday before 4th of July. Well, I guess it fits because the 3rd is on a Saturday. We would do it on the 3rd, I guess, because it's the day before, but typically, we try to do it the weekend before so that families can go do their fourth thing.
Yeah, we try it on the Saturday before the 4th. So you're saying in this case, the Saturday before the 4th?
It's the day before the 4th. The 3rd is on a Saturday, the 4th is on a Sunday.
The Saturday.
And that's what I'm saying, is would you do it on the 3rd, or would you do it the weekend before on the 26th?
Well, in this case, it's interesting because you could do both, but you really don't want to tie the two together, is that?
Well, I, I don't think, um, yeah.
I'm just thinking of preparation.
We can keep it separate because I, I think the opportunity to give it, it's new, you know what I mean? If you mix it in with the, the regular 4th of July, you'd miss the point.
Right, because the 4th of July is not.
Juneteenth?
Juneteenth.
Correct.
It wasn't the Independence Day.
I understand.
But I mean, I've been again.
But I'm saying if you mix it, it's not fair.
It's in the day before, right? We wouldn't have anything set up the Saturday before.
No, but typically with fireworks, we always do have a rain date, which means if it rains on Juneteenth, we usually move it to the next weekend.
No, no, we are not having fireworks on the 19th. Would either be the 26th or the 3rd.
Yeah, if we do the fireworks on the 3rd, because it's always the Saturday before, and then we give you the weekend before that, right?
19th, 26th, 3rd, three weekends in a row. The question to the city of Marlow is, are we going to do the fireworks the day before the 4th versus the weekend before the 4th weekend? Do you see what I'm saying? Because the 3rd, you'll be closed. No, that's a surprise. The, the, we'll be closed on the 2nd for 4th of July. And so then we would be having an event the day after we can close our holiday.
We've actually done our fireworks display actually on the 4th, too. John has a tendency to have, you know.
So it sounds like you want to do the 3rd for the fireworks.
Correct.
And we'll do the 19th for Juneteenth, and then maybe the holiday, we'll look at the Monday after the 4th instead of the Friday before. Because it makes no sense to have a day off and for the weekend, and then have everybody come in and do the fest. That makes sense.
Just to kind of take into parameters outside of just some type of fireworks presentation, Dorothy, what, what would you envision back-to-back living like?
I'm largely feeling like I, right now, I can't do it.
Well, we, we, we got time, but just, you know, write a couple notes. I know there's food, barbecues, because there's all kinds of people we could pull into this that, that might not get fun. Just a little different, but it's, it has the potential to really ask for it, too. Correct?
We'll do it.
All right. So we'll, we'll make some notes. Any other questions on that? All right, going into item 11, 2019 budget updates. Uh, we did just see a profit and loss statement. And I know there was a question as to whether our, our bank recs were up to speed. And Miss Angela, where are we?
Uh, no, she's, they're still not updated yet. She's still pretty much in March, working on reconciling that for the, um, for the general fund right now.
That's, uh... But in, in fairness, if, if we're still on March data with COVID only really being a big issue much later than that, we're still flying blind a pretty good bit, right?
Yeah, we're behind, but I think you've been pulled off to work on other projects. So, you know, um, you've got the whole finance department working on one thing. You're going to get behind them things. I think you can see that from the financial report. You'll note that, uh, June 30th, um, information is still pretty much the same as it was, except for the general fund had a few more expenditures or something like that. So, and then the expenditures for July, um, there's a lot of those haven't been in for yet, so...
I, I know she's looking for a staff account. Have you got somebody?
No, I don't have a vacancy yet to, to advertise, so...
Can I?
Are we missing a body count?
Can I just a quick question? With the additional requests for information that is being fulfilled by different areas, is staff tracking that amount of times?
Um, they, they're not, but we could keep up with it. Because that's one thing I'm thinking about, having them start to keep up with the time they're spending on, on things. It's probably so we're also going to have webinars spending on time.
I would like to request that, um, whether it's Finance Committee or, um, council members requesting information, if, if we could understand how long it takes to fulfill those requests. Uh, and additionally, I would like to, um, be copied on information that is pulled, you know, to have an understanding of the, the depth and breadth of what is, um, being requested and reviewed, um, with this by the Finance Committee. Just a simple CC. Uh, I know maybe not all council members might want to be copied, but I would like to understand, um, how much additional time is, is being taken from day-to-day operations to fulfill requests of questions? The impact of, and any inquiry from the Finance Committee, I would like to...
Let me, let me step one step back. Now, now walk me through this again. So if you've got the ability to have three accounts, you're telling me you have three accounts?
No, I don't have three accounts. I don't have the ability to have three accounts. I don't have any vacancies in my department right now to deal.
But you're saying you don't have the vacancies in the past, but am I missing the math?
Yeah, well, you're missing that the, the person that works in sanitation, who is going to be transferring into the police department. That, that is not happening as seamlessly as we would have.
So that's, that's, that's one. Holland, I heard there's, there's three. And I, I've seen four, so...
I don't have four people. I don't have, um, you have sanitation, too?
Clark Haley, Holland, yes. And then the new person. So the, the question is, is because we haven't been able to transfer that one person over to the police department, we can't make the moves that create that vacancy? Do you follow me?
I am, and, uh... Do we anticipate that vacancy not material?
Yes, it's possible. And now, and that doesn't mean we won't be able to make other decisions. But if we were to hire them right now, it would take a, a termination to clear that up. Because there, there's a glitch in the process and we have to resolve that.
Well, let's, let's leave the glitch alone for just a second. But the argument is you need a staff account.
Yeah, I mean, of course, I mean, because right now, we're about, we're, we're significantly behind with staff. Yeah.
I agree. But some of it's also based on, you know, we, we've got some folks in certain positions that really aren't staff accounts.
They are, they are, what are you saying?
Well...
They are.
And may I, uh, say something about this? Just for the goal of calculating the credit that Chalmers has had with their, or, you know, once I said that the rules damaged the city, along with Chalmers that has, they have been during our, our contract, uh, that we've taken something fair advice to do for the city. And it took about, I had, I, I remember this project had been three weeks now. And before, we don't know how much, uh, resi- how much credit we will get on residential. Two weeks ago, I came in with, Angela told me was that the, the calculating of the past few. So I have the little bit knowledge of the system. So I have a look with her and tried to pull out the reports. So the report that you spend in two weeks to figure out the past few is a module that's been built in, in the system already. It was just a matter of how to fill out parameters to pull out the report that we need. And I am not, that's so you're blessed about that.
Let, let, let's stop, let's stop.
We're willing to help.
Yeah, let's, let's stop a minute, just for one second. Okay. Let, let's back into something that is a better answer. All right? Find me a staff account. Are you good with that?
Yes, sir, yeah.
All right. That'll be good.
So is she saying she's accessing the system or she's directing you to...
She's not directing anything.
Uh, I'm, I'm asking a question. She's directing you to create parameters? I, I'm a little confused based on her answer.
Um, she's asking us to, to pull information from the, from the system on sanitation accounts and things like that, so...
They're having different...
Do analysis.
And that's not necessarily Angela's fault per se, but we don't necessarily have the people. We should have been in that position in the first place. That's just a fact.
I mean, what, I mean, what we did is like, we took, like, for, for, for example, I think this has kind of been going on before, this started before I got here. So, uh, I was trying to fast-track it and spent and put my time into it to try to get this resolved. But we looked at like 470 residential accounts. And to analyze those accounts and see the status of them and all those kinds of things, there were several things I had to do with it. First of all, I found out that there were accounts, um, the things that hadn't been billed in the system. I was told that people had credits in their accounts, but their credits weren't being applied against their accounts. They said it couldn't be done. I found out from working with the software company that you could. I figured out how to apply. Ended up applying about $15,000 worth of credits to people's accounts. Kind of that made a lot of people's accounts hold or whatever. But out of those, we, I think it's one of the, we were looking, she had us looking for like several things. One of the things we were looking for was to identify any accounts that were, say, they were, I guess, ones that were behind, but that were, may have been, that were still, they were behind, but were still, still on the bills, of course, that were being billed for, which we did. And a lot of those, we came up with a roughly about 240, like, past to active accounts. Uh, we came up with another, maybe 58 accounts that were inactive, that were not on the bills, that were just past, but they're past to accounts, period, no big deal. Uh, we only, uh, we found eight accounts that were inactive, but are still on the bill, are still being billed by advance. So of all that, that's what we found. And over like last weekend, like staff, we spent, like, they, they spent Saturday calling all those people that had past to accounts, letting them know we needed them to get their, get in here, to get their spin pass and stuff.
So that's 240 people in the city of Marlboro that were basically going to turn off their service. And the answer to that is before we turn it off, let's call them and make sure they know that they're about to not have any garbage service. And that causes people to pay their bills, correct?
Correct, making the...
So, think of it as, you know, it's a long-term problem, right?
Right.
All the data can't be fairly said was entered correctly. Some of those people won't be doing that in the very near future, hopefully, one way or the other. All right? And we're still going to have a garbage system later. So we've got to be able to fix it. Not just with this one, but with others. So as you go through it, let's try to avoid the chaos and to say, on one hand, we have some real accounting challenges and we need to get you some professional help. Not like you, professional help, but your, 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 your staff, real help, a real accountant, okay? Because that makes a difference. All right? And we keep trying to use bookkeepers to be somebody that they're not. And that's not your fault. That's our fault. We put bookkeepers and try to treat them like they're somebody that they're not. Okay? So it, it is what it is. So that's the idea to fix, is to say we can focus on the chaos. Or we can say, give me a recommendation, but one that you absolutely need for sure, irrespective of whether it's this issue or others, which would be bank recs. Like, bank recs have nothing to do with sanitation, but they haven't been done since March. That, that's a long time, very...
Yeah, it is, yeah.
And we can't close these year books without it, right?
Right.
Which means, what are we going to have this conversation two months from now when the auditors are... Of course we are, because that takes a long time to finish this. Or we can get a warm body in here and, and that knows what they're doing, right? And this council's already pretty much given you the green light in a budget format. We just haven't implemented it yet because we have a few challenges, a good...
There's some overlap, so, and because with the hiring and...
And what I'm saying is we're, we're going to get over that.
That's right. As of today, we can get, we can get that solved. But I, I think that we also need to discuss, um, that part of the examination was how many people, like you said, all these people that don't have, haven't paid their service, is that are we, are you, what do you want to do moving forward? There's now 174 customers.
My philosophy on that is, I think it would be fair, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm certainly not picking on you, really, as you just got here. Um, you're our hope, not the other one. Is because we honestly don't want the same scenario we just had with taxes, right? You know, we hit everybody with a hammer, and next thing you know, well, maybe we told you, maybe we didn't. Good question. You know, let, let's pick a handful of them and say, okay, over the next week, we'll do a third of them. Do them by alphabetical order, so they're not on the same street. The, the following week, we'll do another third, and the following week, do another third. Right? At that point, you're not having to worry about picking on 170 people. That's basically 20% of this city all at one time. Let's give yourself, not you, right? But whoever's in there, at least a little bit of help, because they can't handle the job they already have, much less the job we're about to throw at, right? Give them a little bit of time, right? And then, it's very common, if you don't pay your power bill, the power bill's shut. Right? We're being fair about it, but it's kind of a way of being fair to our citizens to say, we're not 100% confident that we've done this right. That's fair. Give them a little bit of a break, just in case we haven't, right? Reach out to them and say, this is what's going to happen.
Come down the aisle.
Well, as we've done that and we're comfortable with that, then we do the obvious part. If, if you don't pay, you don't get free services.
Well, I think, you know, this, this is like, you know, beating the drum again. It's something that we've dealt with and, and tried to resolve with the sanitation issue. And Councilwoman Tran, as you know, used to work for that department. So there were problems then that, with people not paying and all of that. So we did not have a resolution. We did not have a resolution.
And what, and not paying?
Some people, some people...
And not paying?
No, no, I'm...
Hang on one second, babe.
Some people feel that, you know, certain people need to have a break and, um, or some people have other ways and other means of disposing of their trash and things like that. So when we have all of those different measures in the equation, we, how are we going to resolve this if everyone isn't on the same page?
The first thing is if you have an employee who's doing this, basically is their entire job, we shouldn't be having this discussion in the first place if they're any good at it. That's just a fact.
But what, what I'm going to say to that is that people need to be trained when they're put into positions, I think. Um, and for me, that also entails putting things in writing. I put together a policy of policy, uh, sanitation administration policy and procedure to present to you guys about a month ago. It included a schedule in there for both the commercial and for the residential, when there would be bills, when we would notify them, when we, when, you know, they're going to be cut, cut off or something like that, and when their service would be cut, and when that information would be sent to the, um, the, the, the garbage contract company to have their services, you know, undone. But a lot of what I'm learning from my staff over the past, I guess the ones that are in the position now, is that there was a lot of misunderstanding of, of whether or not you could, like, really have somebody's service disconnected or not. And I mean, the bottom line, if I'm going to stand here, yeah, I'm going to defend them because they're my staff. But at the same time, people need to be trained. You can't just put them in a position and go, pfft, oh, you, you take care of us. That's just not out, that's just not how it should be done in, in, on, on, on any circumstance or something like that. So I think what's, what the right, because you've got good people in the positions, they just need to know what to do and they'll follow those procedures. When you have that in place, and then you can say, well, they didn't do their job because they didn't, they, they didn't know what they were doing. But as any employer, you have a responsibility to make sure that people in the positions are trained to do the job. Period, that's just it.
I kind of disagree with that, but...
And I mean, I think some people, and the goal too, was the, 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 the goal now still is, we're still having a discussion of like, we've got 174 people, $43,000. We contacted them by phone, the ones that had phones, or left messages for them. You know, we need to come in here, we have by Friday. We still have not discontinued their service. They'll have their service until tomorrow, August of, I mean, well, till, till Thursday of August, of course, their service will stop. But there's still a debate amongst you all that whether or not to do that. So imagine you've got an employee in that position, do I really have somebody's services disconnected or not? It's the same thing, I've been there. We've been doing it three years.
It's the uncomfortableness of, of have we went through the due process to let these people know? Now, you have said today
Yes.
that you have.
Yes.
Okay. Now, that part is important to us, because in some other things that we've done with the answer is, we're not real sure about that.
Yeah.
Okay? But if you're comfortable that you have, then go ahead and start to tell them to disconnect the service.
And I mean, if I, if these are some of the same people that we've been dealing with for years regarding that, you know, at one time, they would pay their bill just to get the service or whatever, and then, you know, they don't, they stop paying. So what, what do we do as, as a government to direct the staff on what they should be doing? We need to, we need to settle this and, and, you know, make it for all...
Standing on our practice.
The practice, because we have, for kids who are at residential, we bill in advance. And before the quarter ends, the new quarter kick in, if you have not made any payment, then you won't have the service. But before we do that, we give the customer plenty of time to pay the bill and send them the reminder notice that, hey, you, you bill it past you and you don't, you don't make the payment, your service will be cut off.
I wish the city's not out of any...
Okay, she said, she said that we give them plenty of time. We can't say we give you plenty of time. What is plenty of time? We need to give them
Well, it's, it's revealed...
You know, a date, we can't say plenty of time.
Forty days in advance.
Okay.
Five, five days of the notification that, hey, your, your, your last payment is in the next Friday, time in. Otherwise, your service will be canceled. And we have a, we actually did not cancel on the, the very end date because there will be, there will be mail coming in that they be tied with the customer make payment over the, 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 on the last day, so we always work with that. And it takes two days to, to make sure all the payments come in before we actually cancel the service. But if we don't, then it's dragging so long.
So if I can ask, um, you said you've written some policies that, that need to be implemented.
I just got it last week, I think it was a month ago.
No, huh? Yeah, I did submit it to you a month ago, it was for the last city council meeting.
Well, I was aware of it last week.
So, so for this, for this thing, uh, policies have been written, they weren't previously, uh, a roadmap to, to travel. With the review and, and digging deep, um, whether it's her old emails or her understanding how to pull information from the system because she formerly held the position, how long, how longstanding of a problem has this been? Is this six months, a year?
With, uh, with past to accounts? Well, the past to accounts, the, from the data that I pulled, there's a data, there's like one account from 2003. There's one out there from 2017, and there's some from 2018, and then there's... There's one out there from 2017, and there's some from 2018, and then there's some from 2019.
Every, every business has an age.
But you're saying what's past due, that's, that's, that was the data that we pulled out. And also, yeah, I've been pulling great.
Past due doesn't take that long. There is a module on the counter table to where you can have the past due report. And just a matter, you put the date from starting or the end date, or what year is that? And you click on the one click, and it's out our report, not easy.
Right.
But this gets the staff personnel looking for it. And let's, let's figure out what the glitch is to make the things move forward. We have at least a written idea, let's review it, let's get it to some folks to review it. And if you honestly don't know what you're reviewing, ask questions, right?
And again.
You can review my business's concepts and you wouldn't know what it is you're working at. I don't know the majority of us actually know how to do garbage service, so just, you know, read it, like, you know, the reasons for it. And let's see what the end of what's going to be.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, with, with all of these, I understand there's a staffing need, but with all of these additional projects and taking a look back and kind of reconfiguring what wasn't done, what needs to be done, if, if finance could track the hours for some of these additional projects and share them with council, share them with the city manager and share them with council. And again, if there's requests for information from the finance committee, if we could just as a council be simply copy, we'll understand the depth of information that's being reviewed.
And what, what, what the, the problems or issues are going forward?
Just keep moving because we still have others. All right, so, so we have court, we know court went back into service, right? And what is our revenue collection so far? I mean, we're picking that up, is it slightly normal? Chief says that his numbers on his side are pretty normal. Are the revenue numbers actually received by the city?
And what, the revenue?
Specifically on.
I guess so, yeah.
Fines and costs.
Uh, please, let me check this out, I'm gonna confirm if you're late. I don't think she posted anything. They may not have posted anything yet. There's also 126,000, so that's pretty good for one month.
Does that?
Yeah.
And our year-to-date so far was?
That, well, that is the year-to-date, it's 126,000.
126, but that's coming, I'm looking for last fiscal year, whatever you put. Because that's gonna be, that's gonna be a pretty painful number.
Probably. Oh, 2.8 million.
Collected or budgeted?
Collected. So they collected pretty much what they were, they, they were only short $139.
All right.
Yeah.
That's, that's really. I like that. Business license revenue?
Business license revenue, not so much.
Well, we know there was a deferral, and the deferral, some people came a little bit late.
Stay where you are with that one. Yeah, you're still, you only collected 695,000 out of 1,480,000 budgeted. So you're short 252,000 dollars.
That might be survivable. We've already talked about the DVA write-off, we just want to make sure that that goes in and that's just making sure that the auditors have that. What about the link-up to tax collections?
The link-up to property taxes?
Yeah.
That I'm gonna have to look into more. I think the last time we recorded, I ran was, we were down to about, I think it was about 145,000.
Outstanding.
Outstanding, yeah, the delinquent part and stuff. I was telling her that, I was looking at the balance sheet. The balance sheet's got two numbers on them for property taxes, one current and one uncurrent. Those numbers hadn't changed all year since last year, since the last fiscal year. So they're not applying stuff to the right accounts. So there's a lot, a lot of work, I gotta go back through the receipts and start like allocating stuff back where it really needs to be so that we have some more accurate numbers and things like that. But the property tax revenue, yeah, because that's what they're showing here too, that we've collected 150,000 in delinquent taxes or whatever, and collected 2.2 million of your regular property taxes.
Oh, that's a good point.
And stuff, so I'll just, I'll go back through it and make sure everything got put in the right line items and stuff like that.
We talked about sending out the people that we, you know, seize their property or whatever, that, that, that's checks.
That's one of the things on the finance list, the things to do is cut those checks. We've got the list, we've got the amount, we just gotta get those checks.
Okay, perfect, all right. Interject if somebody's got issues. All right, walking on a little bit more, now we talked about the new budget year, you know, we don't assume the county's gonna have set, you know, its, its number. We know the appeals go out near, in terms of the numbers. So we had discussions about the anticipated set number rate.
Well, we won't, we don't typically get that information from the county until like September.
Local option sales taxes, are we actually moving on with that might be?
We usually get this, get some information from Ramona, but you know, there's a county sale that we haven't got.
How, how accurate is our, if I ran a 10, a 12-month trend on the local option sales tax that we receive? Because it mirrors, right? The local option sales tax for tax purchases, the local option sales tax for supplies, the number's gonna be the same, or 1% is 1%. I'd like to know.
No, it's gonna be, it's gonna be different. You don't, you're not collecting the same amount, because you're only, for the supplies, you're only collecting like a percent based on the overall monthly amount from the, from the county. And they're not gonna exactly equal the same. It's like, I figured it was like 1.3 something percent.
We have to really prove the line item from the local option sales tax line under another way, right? Just the loss number by itself is the percentage, the only number we got.
Yeah.
But I think if we go on that website, we can do a, however many months.
Yeah, you'll be, yeah, go back, yeah.
Because that's, that's gonna be your offset. And, and some of this becomes really important because, you know, the mayor of College Park, two days ago, said that they're used to collecting a million dollars a month in hotel motel taxes. And last month, they collected 112,000.
Wow.
That's a disaster. So when you look at their numbers, we don't have, we don't have absolutely that. But our, you got a problem, right? So this is all about what, what numbers we're pulling out. Okay, so there's that. Positions, organizational charts, different things along those lines. It's 9:30. We've got some ideas on that. We can talk about it and then let's make a recommendation to the council. We see the duty responsibilities, performance, etc., and have their pay scales and different things like that come after. You want to have a conversation about 16 just a little bit on bond refinancing?
So I've met with the attorney this, this Monday. We actually were talking about various topics. And one that unfolded was that they are examining our bond, okay? So she is explaining that it's looking like what was approved by council was not what was translated into the bond transaction. So, you know, that's not good. And that's not some, something, I mean, we hire bond attorneys to do that. We had, you know, multiple attorneys around the table, so I'm not trying to credit this problem to anybody that was on staff or the council, because you hire people to do these things. And so they have bond specialists in their mix. And one of the partners, who is Andy Welch, he's talking about with Earl, who's one of the bond attorneys, just sort of a strategy. Okay, so if this is true, and it seems to be that the council approved something that did not translate into the bond transaction, what options does the city have? And it will probably include conversations with the bank that, you know, that we have the bond with. And so she's advising us not to really have, don't start the conversations yet because the, the bond, well, the, I don't know if he's a bond attorney or if he's just an expert at bonds, there is a difference, will create for us a strategy for the mayor and council to consider. And hopefully it'll result in, in a tool for negotiating a lower interest rate.
That's at least a chance, because remember, our interest rates are about, you know, 100% greater than the market rate right now. So I like that, as we move forward. It's 9:30, a lot of stuff here. If there's no objection, we'll call it a night.